Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our October 7, 2025 Angels Camp City Council Meeting. We will start with roll call.
Councilmember Beal.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sharada.
Here.
Mayor Shemante.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is Report Out of Closed Session. No action was taken, and we gave directions to staff regarding the items listed. Moving on to Item 6, Presentation, Proclamation, Recognition. Presentation for Firewise Update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda is a presentation from the local Firewise group of Angels Camp. We have Steve Wilcox with us tonight, who's kind of the leader of the group, and he's been gracious enough to give us some of his time, basically to give you an update on the progress of Firewise and an exciting event coming up. So, Mr. Wilcox.
Thank you, sir. My pleasure to present the City of Angels with their official recognition sign of being a certified Firewise community. We have the right to put this as much as we want to in the city. We'll talk at a future time about promoting the program. I want to give you a little idea of what it's all about. Firewise is a nationally recognized program, nonprofit. It's about 37 years old. It encourages communities to get together and make their residential neighborhoods more fire safe, make changes and improvements. The incentive is substantial, insurance discounts. Who likes that idea? And it's getting better. Rich is our insurance expert, and he will tell you some exciting things if I give him enough time about changes in Fair Plan. I listened to the state insurance commissioner speak a few days ago, and he must have used the word mitigation 25 times. That's where this is going, making your properties safer. And the incentives are going to be more and more discounts, especially for Fair Plan folks. So it's a really good thing. We started this in March, Rich and I, watching the devastation in Southern California, feeling some concern about that for us. And we looked into Firewise and says, what does it take? Well, we figured out, we put our application in March. We started out with the territory of Greenhorn Creek and Angel Oaks and a few surrounding places, and 680 homes, which is a pretty big first step. To get into Firewise, you have to submit a proof of work for defensible space clearing and other things. And this is where I want to sincerely, with all my heart, thank our city council for something you did a couple of years ago. You are responsible for the reassessment of Greenhorn Creek fees. They went from 300 to 650, I think. That money has given us a fund to use to clean up 30-plus years of deferred maintenance and defensible space. And Chief John has toured the neighborhood with Rich and I. How'd we do?
Excellent. It's amazing.
So there's a cost to get into Firewise. You have to prove the work. It's about $35 per residence. So we met that goal easily. And then somebody decided it would be a good idea to expand and cover the whole City of Angels. So just a few days ago, we got our official approval letter, and the entire 95222 ZIP code is now a certified Firewise community.
Wow.
So our work is just beginning because it's not just about getting insurance discounts. People like that. The real work is to get people to let us inspect their properties and show them how to make it safer. And that's called home hardening, and it's part of the Firewise program. The first discount for insurance, everybody gets just for living in the neighborhood. The second discount requires you to make some changes as needed. And so we're in the middle of training. We have about five or six retired fire professionals on our committee. They're going to go out and volunteer to help people make changes. And when people make the changes, their discount will go up tremendously. So we're going to use, I think Chief Parks has offered his training center at Bret Hart High School and our county. We're working with the County Resource Conservation District, and we're putting on something called the Firewise Festival. So I'm going to pass some of these around, November 1st, at our fairgrounds here. We were going to do a little party at the new park, but it got way too big. One of the drawbacks, I think, of Firewise, there's no way to fund it and take donations to do the outreach and education that we want to do. So we went working with Trina from the Resource Conservation District. They allowed us to take our organization in under their wing as a nonprofit and be able to receive donations. So this Firewise Festival coming to the fairgrounds has got a tremendous response from sponsors and vendors, fire safety equipment. It's already way past our initial target for money to raise. And all the money that is raised above our costs goes to the Firewise communities of Calaveras County. Since we started Angels, Rich and I have been invited to speak at West Point and all kinds of places, and especially, I'm proud of Murphy's. We've got six or eight new Firewise communities starting right now. And they're all going to be there. We're going to have money for outreach and education for all of them, and it's going to be a good thing for our whole county. I'm going to turn it over to Rich Martin now. Thank you very much. Anybody want a flyer? I'll pass these out to anybody who wants one.
Thanks, Steve. So I'm the insurance guy, so usually around the boos. Here we go. Some of you may be in the same situation where you failed to look the other way when they ask for volunteers, and here I am. So Steve, as he said, we started this back in March with John's help and a lot of other community people. It's really more than insurance discounts. It's meeting the community, kind of a common focus, education, and then the individual homeowners. It's very confusing to a lot of people, and it's still confusing to a lot of people. NFPA is National Fire Protection Agency, national deal. They do everything from code enforcement to evacuation plans. One of the programs they have is called Firewise, and that's Steve explained how you go about becoming a Firewise community. They like them to be about 450 to 500 dwellings. There are 11, we're the 11th one in Calaveras County, all the way up the hill. Some have been around since '17 and '18. So they do a lot of awareness stuff. Copperopolis has three going now, Murphy's has more, and Valley Springs is starting. So it's really becoming a very popular deal. So there are over a thousand communities in California now. So it's just, they're getting bombarded. So we did ours at 680. Oh, step back just a second. The Department of Insurance came out with a, called Safer From Wildfires, basically rule or whatever it is. For every insurance company that writes "fire business" in California, they have to have these three discounts in their rate file. One is Firewise, one is the home hardening deal, which is basically your structure, and the other one is defensible space, surrounding areas. They have to be in there. But here's where they fell short. They told all these insurance companies, you pick what you want to get. So some give, you know, $10, or some give a percentage. The Fair Plan is pretty generous. USAA is the absolute best. State Farm, everybody has a little bit different percentage as far as the discounts, but they're mandated to give it. So when it comes to Firewise, that's just a community discount. You live in the community, the map, you get an automatic discount with your carrier. So the process is a little cumbersome because it will be six months before all the addresses are in the database. So, but it's still possible. You can get the discount today. So Greenhorn Creek and Angel Oaks, we were approved in May. It just got in to their database last Friday. So they told me the next one will be December 1st. They did not want us to be 2,200 dwellings, but because of administration, I said, hey, we've got the fire chief on our committee, we've got people from the city helping us. So we're going to move it into basically four different zones and have a neighborhood representative, one from Skelty Park, one from, you know, we have enough room for Habitat to absorb those people so that we have room for growth. But the discount, and then the Fair Plan is revising all their discounts November 15th. So it's going to be a lot easier to get discounts on those three areas. But the discount from Fair Plan on the Firewise is 10%. So off the policy, and then the other two equal another 10 and another 5 if you can qualify for this. So really good deal. It's gone kind of countywide. It is a process that people don't understand because they don't, you know, a lot of skepticism, rightfully so, on insurance carriers. I don't want anybody coming out and looking at my house. I don't want anybody inspecting. Firewise is just live in 95222, send it to your insurance carrier, and no inspection comes out, nothing happens. You just get the discount. The other two are going to, depending on the carrier, would possibly require another inspection. So that's a pretty, we did not expect the approval. And all of a sudden, the guy's like, hey, sorry, didn't get back to you sooner, and approved it. Okay, long story, but yeah, exciting stuff. But John and his team have been great. Amy at the city, I don't know Amy.
Amy Augustin.
Oh, Amy, the maps! Amy has produced our maps. So we're, we have not even launched it. Literally, the approval came in yesterday. We haven't told anybody, but it's 95222. So if you're in that, and some of the people out, Apollusa and that area are paying a lot of money for Fair Plan. So, oh, I did a little, real quick, I don't know, probably already burned my time, but did a little math. Homeowners in with just the Firewise in Angels Camp between just the dwellings, it's about a $300,000 return of premium.
Wow.
To residents of Angels Camp, between Fair Plan and regular State Farm and everybody else. Because everybody has to give it, it's just a different percentage. But they added up the policies, the average premium, and that might even be on the low side, and then the discount. So it's about $300,000 in premium. Now, that's only Firewise. If they have the other issues, it could be a lot better.
So talk about, because I just went to...
Oh, I'm not taking any questions. What I just heard.
I'm just curious, is it, is now that we're in 95222, is that automatic when renewal comes up, or do we have to say something to our agent?
You're going to have to say something to your agent initially. Now, once it cycles, there's a company called Bearris. All the NSPA sends their information to, it's a data company that all insurance companies use. So right now, if you lived in Angel Oaks, and I was quoting your insurance policy, it would automatically apply the discount because that information is in there. But it took six months to get it in there. So on first renewal or initial new business, and you can add it midstream now, so you don't have to wait for your renewal. Fair Plan is, the only one that can add in is your agent or one of your new agents. I'm just saying, I don't know. It's a, it's a real process with that, but they eventually will get. Now, on renewal, once it's on there, it stays on.
Okay.
Yeah. And if you were to, they say that the next update is December 1st with Bearris, so maybe by January 1, that'll probably be three or four weeks till they get theirs in there, that if I was to quote your policy, it would be automatically applied. Right now, we got to kind of verify it, but there's an agreement that they will take it, and then on renewal, if the address is still not in there a year from now, then they would say, wait a second, they'll remove the discount. But there's, AngelsFirewise.com is our relatively weak website right now to be enhanced, but it has a certificate on there. So you can just go in and download the certificate, send it to your agent. State Farm knows all about it. If you get a, somebody outside the area, they may give some pushback, we want to see a map, we want to see this. There are no maps. There are no maps.
And affecting now, everybody in 95222 could use that certificate.
To prove.
To get your discount.
Thank you.
Two questions. One, does it also go for 95221?
So interesting, we submit, there are no dwellings in 95221. It's only, it's only PO boxes. Initially, we sent it in, and they're like, yeah, so that was Steve, we're...
Oh, interesting.
Because it was like 300 PO boxes, and it's right, so yeah.
Okay. And then is, on the website, does it give you instructions on how to harden the home?
Yes, there are, and then we're going to have, we're still building it out, but it will be hopefully in the, yeah, we could see that, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah.
You will be able to request. This material is free from Firewise, it's beautiful stuff. This home, this lumber chair here talks about, what do you do? Zero to five feet, 30 feet, all that stuff. And so this is going to be available to anybody who wants it, and our evaluators, our fire guys, are going to be going by this to make their inspections and make recommendations, and so we can help people make changes. It's pretty much the same as CAL FIRE requirements, their inspection requirements, and every insurance company is pretty standard, zero to five, you know, five to 30, and then, so trim, everybody's kind of, it's all kind of the standard deal. The thing the Fair Plan just changed is they have the home hardening, which is Class A roof, bone no problem, double-pane windows, six inches of clearance on the cement, basically your foundation without, approved vents, and then they threw in the enclosed eaves, which John and his team and us debated, enclosed eaves, that's basically a soft.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's three homes in California. And I said, do you think they really developed a discount that absolutely nobody qualifies for? Yes, they did. So what they're changing in November, you can start doing it in October 15th, and November is its à la carte. So if you have four of those five, you get 4, 80% of the discount. So they're all individual ones. Same with the zero to five. The thing on the home hardening part, where it will get, well, it will kind of benefit us in this area, and kind of, one of the kickers is if you have a wooden fence attached to your house. Because they don't want wood burning down, and then, so you can put sheet metal, you know, put trests the first five feet. And that's what this festival is going to, we're going to have vendors that are there that do this kind of stuff, so people can come out. And Steve's team of these volunteer will be trained to come out, and if you're with, say, Travelers, and their discount's eight bucks, and it costs you $1,000 to do it, maybe you don't do it. If it's young. So we'll be able to kind of evaluate it. And then some of the overflow money will be almost a grant-type situation for people that can't, want to be mitigated, but they can't, they just can't afford it. So, yeah, good stuff. Any other questions?
You know, I want to thank Caroline. I don't know if you know this, but she brought it to the council's attention, and then she was working with John to kind of kick this off. So I truly appreciate you bringing it forward for us because it's a benefit to all of our citizens. Thank you, Caroline. And thank you guys for what you're doing.
The whole 95222 was kind of a shocking deal.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. So moving on to Item 6B, Proclamation. I just wanted to include the proclamation in the packet that Steve, with Deb Ponty's help, developed. I didn't want to read it and take away from the day that we're going to present it at the Wild Wild West Day. So it's just more of an information item that's going to honor that family. So we're not going to read it or present it here. We will do it that day. Steve, anything else?
No, thank you for the good idea. I think traditionally, we try to have the sidewalk plaque for this festival. It's not going to be here by this Saturday. So this was a good alternative to recognize the winner of this year's event.
You know, and Michelle, I'm sure that you guys have a calendar for everything, but it would be good to, if you have a master calendar of things to do, is like right after Frog Jump, if we couldn't order the plaques and not have them, you know, so that we can...
I believe the city clerk always did that, but in her absence, I think.
Okay, okay. So if we, good, I'm glad that it...
We'll put it on, we have it in general calendar, so that's not a bad idea.
I did not ask if, do we have anyone online who had any comments about our two presentations?
I don't see any questions online.
Okay, thank you. So we're moving on to Item 7, Approval of the Agenda as Posted or Amended. Steve?
I have no changes. Thank you.
Any changes from the council? Would anybody on the public like to change the order of the agenda?
I think we should approve the agenda.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Michelle?
Beal.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Shemante.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moving on to Item 8, Public Comment. The public may adjust the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. But anybody, does anyone have any public comment? If you do, please approach the podium and state your name.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Debbie Ponti, and tonight I'm here representing the Angels Camp Museum Foundation. So this weekend is our big event at the museum, Saturday, October 11th, from 10 to 4:00. We just have about 28 different activities going on at the museum, all at the same time. So the museum is opened up with all the docents on site, talking about the exhibits and the history of the exhibits. We have the Black Irish Band, Old West Trio onboard to play music throughout the day. We've hired Jeffrey Wesman, who portrays Mark Twain in a number of roles, and he will be present to do a little speakeasy in the carriage house. We have different types of gold panning that day. We have all sorts of kids' activities. And to probably conclude it all, we have axe throwing. So we welcome, we welcome and invite you to join us. It's an opportunity to work out some of those aggressions. We also have food and beverage on site, and the proceeds from this particular event go to the foundation, and in turn, we present to the museum. And the museum uses this money to help create new exhibits and to take care of existing exhibits, whether they need repair, signage, et cetera. So a big event for us, and a great opportunity for the community to come together to basically respect and honor our heritage, and, but most importantly, meet new friends and visit with the old. So that's one of our big fundraisers. The other one we have, which I presented to Michelle, is the Angels Camp Museum does a membership drive. We do this throughout the year. We try to narrow it down to July and August for the drive, but we're open to memberships throughout the year. So we have several different layers of membership, or levels, I should say, everything from a neighborhood partner level at $15, $50, to a patron level, to a partnership level. So I encourage you as council members to join the foundation so you can be a part of the activity that happens there, as well as the general community. Currently, we have about 210 members. Some of those are couples, families. And my personal goal for the foundation is to reach 300 by the end of the year. So I thank you for your time, and I hope to see you on Saturday. If you can't join us on Saturday, then I'll hope you become a member of the foundation.
A week from Saturday?
This Saturday.
I thought it was on the 11th.
It is. What did I say?
You said...
You said this Saturday.
This Saturday.
Today?
Housewiggum was the fourth.
Oh!
Saturday is the 11th.
See, it happens when you retire.
We just run together.
So, Michelle, would you put on that master calendar that the mayor is supposed to be there at 12:00?
I can't figure it. It's March this week. It was, yeah, right, thank you. Well, I wanted to add a little humor.
You did.
Nice.
My heart took a few extra beats. All right. Thank you. She's like, wait, what?
Anyone online with public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. So hearing all the public comment, we'll close it and move on to Item 9, Consent Items. We have four. Approve draft minutes of September 16, 2025. Resolution 25-74, authorizing state Route 49 road closure in the City of Angels for the Christmas parade. C, Resolution 25-75, authorizing banners and decorations over state Route 49 in the City of Angels Historic District. And last, Resolution 25-81, authorizing the final closure of the city's account at U.S. Bank and Transfer of Funds to Bank of Stockton. Would any city council member like to pull an item?
Yes, I need to pull A and B, and maybe C.
A, B, and maybe C?
I'll just pull.
I might as well just pull C. Awesome. Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else on the council? Anybody in the public would like to pull consent agenda item?
Nothing online.
Okay, so we will first hear Item 9D, Resolution 25-81, authorizing the final closure of the city's accounts at U.S. Bank and Transfer of Funds to Bank of Stockton.
I'll make the motion to approve D.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council? Anything from those here? Anyone online? Roll call.
Beal.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Shemante.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moving on to Item 9A, Approve Draft Minutes of September 16, 2025.
In the minutes, under Number 8, second bullet point, I just want a clarification. It says Julie Davis. I think it's Julie Douglas.
Okay.
Any other comments from council on this item?
Nope.
Anyone from the public? Anyone online? Michelle, regarding this item?
We can approve with the change, right?
Yeah. Okay, so...
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes with the change.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. We all good? Michelle?
Beal.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Shemante.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Item 9B, Resolution 25-74, authorizing state Route 49 road closure in the City of Angels for the Christmas parade.
So on here, under Financial Impact, it says the school generally requests a fee waiver. I think that's left over from the last one for homecoming, so it's actually, is ACTBA requesting the fee waiver?
Yep.
So, great, just make that change. Okay, great. Sure. Yep, it's correct on the resolution. Great. So I'll make the motion to approve the resolution with the correction.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council? Any discussion from the public present? Hearing none? Michelle, anybody online with a comment? Okay, roll call.
Beal.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Shemante.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
And Brolio.
Yep.
Item 9C, Resolution 25-75, authorizing banners and decorations over state Route 49 in the City of Angels Historic, Historical District.
So my question on this one, it has to do with the taking down of the Christmas decorations. Last year, they got stuck up there until almost, I think, Valentine's Day. So do we need to include that in this as well?
I asked Taitlin about that because I was reviewing the agenda, and she said that what this does this year is different in that it gives us permission to take down without having to wait for next year's improvement, permits to be approved.
Great, thank you. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 25-75.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council?
Nope.
Any discussion from the public present? Hearing none? Any discussion from online? Roll call.
Beal.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Shemante.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Item 10A, Action Items. Resolution 25-73, approving Task Order 9 with Lewis and Associates for groundwater exploration service to develop a secondary water source. Aaron. Aaron?
Good evening, mayor members of the council. What you have before you this evening is a resolution, a task order for exploring secondary water sources. So, I guess the long and short of this, the state passed a Senate bill in 2021, which requires small water systems, those with fewer than 3,000 service connections, to develop a secondary water source. The proposal that you have in front of you is for the city to develop, identify and develop a secondary source being a well located in close proximity to the water treatment. Location was preliminarily selected based on known water sources in the area. From, I think it was during the Darby Fire, they put a well, sunk a well in a mining shaft and overland, ran a water line up a mile or so to get the water treatment plant where it was treated. This solution will bring, I guess, a little bit of independence to the city to have a source that's not dependent on flumes upstream and/or water conveyance systems that are owned, operated, and maintained by other entities. That's the proposal in a nutshell. With me today, I have Mike Hardy, he's a hydrogeologist from our office. This is what he does day in, day out. We've recently conducted a similar, very similar project for Sierra Tahoe, develop a water source for this ski resort there. Do you have any questions, or how would you like to approach it from here?
Do you have any other comments to make, or would?
Do you, we could go, do you want to go through the presentation, tell what, so that way they know what we're proposing, what we'll be doing with the task orders?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Evening, community council. We put this together, this is just a little, I think, my 10 or 11 slides. What we're doing up here for Sierra Tahoe Ski Resort is something that would be very similar to what we'd be doing down here for the town. This area, if you can see in yellow up there, that is the ski area. That's what their, that's their special use permit for Forest Service in the area. You can see just the south side of Lake Tahoe up there, and you can see, call it the lake representation. Highway 50 is that brown line, just north coming over Ecosummit, right next to the ski area there. Next slide. So what we've done so far for them is we've conducted a LiDAR survey. And what that is, is we fly over, and obviously, they have a little bit of authority there back in 2022, but we can create what's known as a digital elevation map. It takes out the vegetation out, and so all you see is just the land surface itself. So we've conducted that, we've done the geologic field reconnaissance based on looking at the map and looking for different types of faults and fracture zones. What they're called are liniments. And we'll look a little bit closer at one of those. We've also done some surface geophysics, and the whole idea is we've got a great big area, and what we're trying to do is focus down on the areas that are the most prominent. And the geophysics is kind of expensive, so the better we can focus that in and tie that down, the more economical it is. And then went back and validated the sites that were found with the geophysics to see what kind of challenges we would have with those sites to drill. The future tasks we're doing, actually, today, we did an aquatic survey, which was required by Forest Service up there. We've got some permitting, and then we're going to some exploratory boring, and then follow it up with just a technical memorandum of the findings that we have up there. Next slide. This here is a photo of the LiDAR survey. On it, you'll see colors, the red are the colors. It's an elevation map in a way, what you're seeing here, but you can also see on there these dash lines. And the dash lines are liniments that we identified on their property up there, which could or could not potentially be fault systems within the Sierra Nevadas.
Or lines?
Liniments are, well, they're, they're kind of like a profile that you can see, and it's a geologic term, I guess. And it's just a geomorphic protrusion that's kind of straight in a line. And so we can put those in there, as you can see, there are quite a few that we were able to identify on that. So once we did that, we went up and did some reconnaissance to validate and see if those liniments up there were actually potential faults or not. Next slide. And this is a shot from the ski area. Right there in the middle is this bowl, which was a really interesting area. There's a lot of faults that kind of cross it, and actually kind of created this bowl. And so we're very interested in this area in itself. Next slide. So once we identified a bunch of different areas to go up and do the geophysics, one of them was by the bowl, another was actually in the parking lot. What you see in the shaded gray there are the actual parking areas. And then what you see with this color, the first, the first kind of shallow, you see like warmer colors and greener colors. What this is, is you can see these little lines. And so they took this gamma ray instrument and they walked this area. And when they get done walking, what they're looking for is resistance to gamma rays. If they're just walking over Sierra Nevada baffle, there'd be a lot of gamma rays coming out of the rock itself. And when you don't see that, which are the green areas, usually you have some kind of moisture, a lot of water. You can see that big, long linear one next to that number 30. Well, that's a, that's the septic system. So that kind of gives you an idea, you've got leach fields there too. But the area just to the far right, or left side, I'm sorry, wherever you got like 61 through 65. They found some very interesting areas. They're small, but that doesn't really tell you the whole story. So once they have identified these areas in green, which are the long gamma, then they go back in and they do this seismic resonance analysis. And what that is, is I'm sure everybody here is familiar with tides, ocean tides. They come in, they go out. Well, there's another type of tidal called an earth tide. So if there's a lot of fractures, and as the moon passes over the earth, it pulls, and these fractures move, and they vibrate, as well as rotational. So they're able to see what that resonance is. And by focusing in, and you can see, they're not doing it in very many areas. They're just doing where they're right, where they think things are going on. They focus on that and see what kind of resonance or movement they're seeing subsurface in that area. And so those are the areas that we targeted for the microseismic analysis. Move to the next slide. Here's two of the areas right next to the parking lot. We call them P1, P2 for parking lot, but we changed that later for Forest Service. But you'll see those cross-sections to the right. And what you're looking at there is those real deep purple and reds. Those are fracture zones, and that's what we're targeting. That's what we're looking for. And you can see that there's a lot of bedrock there. If you're not in the exact right location when you're drilling, you could be a few feet off and completely miss that offer. And what we're targeting here, what are known as fractured bedrock. So this, this is an example of what we were able to find up there, just utilizing some of the methodologies we're proposing here. You go to the next slide. This is just a picture of those last two. Here's the parking lot, you see T1, T2. Those are the two sites that we identified down here near the parking lot itself. Forest Service wants anything in the water that can personally flow downhill during the drilling. They want the wet areas looked at to see if there's any frogs, which you guys probably have a few around here. So we got to look for, I guess it's the yellow frog or the yellow striped frog. So they'll be, actually, they're doing that today, so we should know the results of those. Next slide. And then this one on here, you can see up in that wet area, T1, T2. And so we identified where they had to do the aquatic surveys. And then you'll see there's a really good promising area in that bowl that you saw in the earlier slide. And then over the backside of the hill, we found another location. So those are the four areas that we're targeting right now, which probably will drill three of the four. We're trying to do that work this fall, but since they're at the top of the Sierra Nevadas, and we're in the middle of October almost, we're not sure if we're going to even get to drill back up there before it snow flies. We're hoping to get something taken care of by then. If not, we'll do it once the snow melts, next spring. Next slide. So this is just what further tasks we're, we're going to be doing up there after we finish the exploration drilling. And then the last slide is just, if anybody has any questions, it's just looking up the ski area. You can see that bowl right at the top up there. And so one of the sites is right in the bowl, the other two are down here by the parking lot where I showed you earlier, and it went over the backside.
So that's, you know, the same steps you would go for, go through to explore for opportunity for a secondary water source well for the city.
So, so for the students in the audience, you probably were, I think all of you were born during the Darby Fire.
No, that was 2001.
Oh, 2001, okay, no, you're right. No, you burned, you'd be really old, that's twice tonight. Anyway, long story short, is when the Darby Fire, when it burned, it burnt the three-quarter mile flume. And so that water delivers, it's a, it's a flume that hangs on the outside of a mountain.
It's like the log, right?
It's like, yeah, and so it burnt. And so once, it disrupted our water flow to the city. So ever since then, the city has been looking for what's called a redundant water source. A lot of we supply water in the case of emergency. So that's what this item on the agenda is talking about. You're right, it was 2001.
It was 2001, it was right, right before 9/11.
Yeah, 2001.
They're not 20 years old.
The, the, looking for the drilling areas, we're looking at three potential areas, correct? That we're going to drill to see what the water is like, is that right? But we're only going to end up with one well at the end of the day?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
So I really appreciate this, this is something I think that's been long overdue. I know it's looked at, there are some studies that are 20, 25 years old, I think. Some value here, you can look into that. I really appreciate the tasks all laid out with the dollar signs on. Now, if you get to say task five, and things aren't looking real promising, we wouldn't go on with five through seven, which are, you know, six is the expensive one. But things, if we get to task six, which is the test well drilling program, can we mean that that's something that we're pretty excited about as far as getting enough water? And then how much is enough water? How much, how many gallons per minute do these wells have?
That's mic, yeah.
So our plant can produce, I believe, at least 1,440 gallons a minute. But we're not trying to achieve that. If we can get around, you know, between 800 to 1,000, we may.
Because this is for emergency use. This is in a good place.
Right, this is. So I guess to answer Scott's question, at some point, you'd only go to task six if the five tasks above it were productive.
Yeah, we have, I think, task four, we have what we call the partial technical memorandum. And so we present to the council here the results of the geophysics and the probability that one of the sites, or did we find three sites, did we find one site? And when we think that probability is moving forward. And then give the council the option to say, you know what, we don't like the risk, or, you know, this looks really good, let's move forward. That's kind of, that's a common way of handling it.
And Chris, I'm sure I shared with you that we did a test well back, and I'm not sure when, and we hit an abundance of water. However, we couldn't drill the well because it was too close to our septic system up there, the treatment plant. So there's water up there.
If anybody else has got a question? So I guess my question would be is, well, first off, I'm still 100% behind Utica, and that is our primary water source that it's going to be for years to come. But my question being is, should we be looking into storage tanks also? Or is it a number one option? Because we run out of water quickly. So is, is storage tanks not an option to remedy this? Because we leave the storage tank.
It's not, because the state is mandating us to have a redundant.
A redundant water source. And I, and I get why we're looking into that too. And then my, I guess my other question, I have lots of questions, because it's kind of interesting, but I have, I have questions. So you're going to do the LiDAR to find liniments?
Yep.
Which are faults?
Well, they're potential faults. They could be faults, they could be other kind of structures, they could be contacts, they could be siles within, they're just exposed at the surface. We won't, they won't tell us until we go out and take a look at them. A sill is like, if you have a Sierra baffle, and then you have another kind of volcanic episode that comes up, you can get another type of geologic.
And we're not wanting to build over those, or are you looking for those?
Well, we're, we'll be looking for the faults.
Okay.
The liniments that are identified as faults. And those are the ones we're going to look at. We don't know, like, we just call them attitudes. So let's say this is a fault, here's the surface right here.
Yeah.
And we can see that fault line right here. We won't know what the attitude, the attitude is.
Pitch.
To dip, yep, and strike across that fault at subsurface, or where that fault might open up and have high fracture zones, so we can look for fractures. And I'm sure the geophysics can come in, so they can go over the surface of that area and look down within that fault and say, oh, it really opened up down, down here, about 400, 500 feet or.
Okay. And then you have the gamma that was showing the green where water is located.
Well, it impedes water, moisture, and water like that will impede the gamma rays. So it's kind of like, it's a non, how would I put it? I guess not evasive, not direct and indirect targeting.
Okay.
So what we do is we'll do, we'll do the LiDAR over a large area, and then take a look for the liniments. And then we'll identify locations within that LiDAR study that have high probability of success with the geophysics. So when they'll come in, and they'll do the gamma ray over those areas, and if any of those areas with the gamma ray, then they focus down with the microseismic to see what kind of, because then you're getting even tighter down. So all these different types of geophysics are focusing down. And the microseismic is what will tell you where and depth and probability.
Okay, and then I have, I guess I have one more question there too, that, this is going to sound really weird. So is what you were doing with the LiDAR, is it more accurate than the old timer going out there with two willow sticks? Or two copper brass rods? And when they cross, you drill right here?
Right.
Is, is what, is what you're proposing, are the odds better, the same, worse? I don't know, so I'm trying to.
I want to do a competition, actually, when I was bringing it, I was like, we should get the water witcher.
I was having a conversation with Michelle outside on, we did do well for a client, and his bookkeeper was a water witcher.
Okay.
And, I don't know, this, you definitely agree with this or you're not.
Wow, I'm just intrigued, it's all, I'm just, I have questions.
Because this is, I've only had two experiences with water witches. But anyways, so he brought this lady out, and she witched the location, so, okay, I want you to drill a well here. So when we put the filing in, similar to what you guys said, you found water, but it was too close to, this potential location was too close to a septic system. So the county women went drilling. Well, I'm not going to pick a new spot, because he brought a water witcher down from Idaho. So I told him, and so he brought it back down. And this time, I had to watch her. And I was out there, and she was out there walking around, and she picked a spot, pat down her hands and knees with her, I think they're metal.
Yeah, the rods, yeah.
And she's tapping them on the ground, and I wasn't going to interrupt her. And then she got done, she said, okay, if this is a spot, and she put a flag in the ground, I said, oh, okay. She said, I think it's going to be about 350 feet down, and she gave about 130 to 150 gallons a minute. I went, wow.
Pretty specific.
Just as a joke, and I asked her, I said, well, if you were in Europe, would you be calculating that out leader's end? And she, she was all serious. And she said, I have to think about that. So anyways, we went in and we drilled the test hole. And I did find the geophysics, which is vertical geophysics, you're running, you're running these at the log, potential areas where, with screen interval where the water would be. And I think the total depth of the hole is about 800 feet.
Wow.
We found three zones. One of them was the 350. The other two were deeper, and the probability with the geophysics looked like those were better options. So we did what's called zone testing, where you can go in, you can actually try to pump from those specific zones in the bore hole. And the first two, the deeper two, did not pan out, and the shallower one, the 350, did. And we finished. And we finished it, did do about 330 gallons a minute. So I can't say anymore than that.
Right.
But, you know.
I think that's what it is. What you said, where you can't explain physics.
I can't explain science.
Why that. But we can't explain how this works.
Right. And that's why I'm assuming we have to, because there's, I mean, I would say 98, 99% of the wells that have been drilled in this entire county have been done with a water witching. So, but I'm assuming there's no scientific to back that up for funding or anything else to come. And that's where, that's where this plays into what's happening. So that's all, I'm, perfect. Thank you.
One more question. What is your timeline for these tasks? Or when do you think we can expect something that's going to lead them to?
Based on approval, I came up. So I put together some rough estimates. Task one and two can be done within a nine week period once you get the thumbs up. Task three, I'm guessing right now, when we haven't, we have to see what the schedule is, but roughly six weeks to get the geophysics done and the report put together. And then preliminary data analysis and presentation, about three weeks to come back and talk with you.
Okay. Three, four months?
So three or four months, first day or something, we'll have some. Yeah, I'm good. Any other discussion, Carol?
Is this all being physical here, 2.5, 2.6?
Yes.
Yeah, this all is true, okay.
Caroline, any other questions?
Not permitting, is it, right?
Yeah. I'm assuming you'll give us updates if there's some major.
Weather permitting, yeah.
Absolutely.
Did you say it was weather permitting?
Yeah, well.
You don't want rain at all?
The drilling would be weather permitting, geophysics probably. Obviously, they're not going to go out there and rain. It's raining over here. They're going to need pretty clear skies for the LiDAR. So yeah, we can do task one for sure, because that's really the desktop search and analysis and recon. So part of that, I mean, we still, we can still do it. Those two will be going at the same time.
For the LiDAR, we have two days of good weather.
So could I ask for, could I ask for an update before we hit task six, which is the big dollar amount, if that's okay?
Yeah, we can come back in and we actually put that in task four.
Oh, was it four? Okay, I missed that.
To, yeah, give you the partial, where we're at, what the probabilities are, and then decide.
Any questions from the public present? You guys just did your science class, you should get credit for this. Anyone online, Michelle?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the council? Any discussion from the public? Anyone online? Roll call.
Bee Hill.
Hi.
Sharato.
Hi.
Chamentay.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Bro Leo.
Thank you. We look forward to that. I mean, it's been an item of concern for our community. It's what we all talked about when the three of us were running for reelection, or election. And it's, I'm glad that we're moving forward in the right direction. Understanding that we do have a water source that does supply, but it'd be nice to have something in case of an emergency. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So moving on to item B, resolution 25-80, approving pavement management program 2025 to 2030, amendment number one. Aaron.
Good evening again. What I bring to you is an amendment to the pavement management plan, which we approved last month. What this includes is a section on the unfunded liabilities requested by council. So we have a, again, a map which identifies a lot of blue worms. Those are all the areas that have unfunded, they're not part of the five-year program right now.
Right.
Again, it's a living document. We've got one project on the books that's going to go out to bid here. That's our kind of carbon stone one. As we move into next year, we'll, we could take a look at this before we approve the next year's pavement management program and adjust, make small adjustments for projects as necessary. One thing that you'll see on this one is Valacido Road and Capello Road were both previously not included on the mapping. They just weren't inventoried. They're included as an unfunded. I still do not know what the PCI pavement conditioning mix is on those roads, because we haven't gone out there and surveyed them. So as data becomes available, they will move around in this program.
Thank you for noticing that.
Absolutely. And then if something does come up next year, we could just amend, we would amend the document, just like we're doing today.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
No, thank you very much.
So if I understand this right, basically, we have this plan, and staff is going to depend on conditions and, you know, maybe they get a different force, common sense, or, you know, conditions. Then you're going to pivot to a different road or a different thing. There's no physical impact. Would this be a report versus council approval? And the staff's the experts, and they're coming, they're going to say, you guys are going to dictate, if you're going to do this road, then you might change, you might do a stopgap instead of, you know, something different based on what you learn in the field. But I don't know that you want to come back to us every single time.
You know, how much do you want to be involved? If we did a report, that's, that's fine with me. I kind of, personally, I like the interaction, just so you guys are surprised, well, it's one, this is kind of a new thing. You were trying to develop this program. If a report is fine, I'm happy submitting a report. If there was like a requested change to the plan that came through the council, hey, we want you to look at this, then maybe that's something that we come and we discuss either at the council or, you know, you can have a committee. Two council members meet with myself and Chris, and we could hash through a direction that the council may have and then report back. So if we want to have a report, I'm happy with that, too.
Yes, I'm a firm believer that a horse is a candle, does that by committee? And I want staff to have, the professional people, as much flexibility in doing the job correctly as possible. And so that's why I'm questioning, I'd be happy with a report.
Yeah.
Personally.
Any other comments?
No, I can see both sides of it. I mean, this is a newer thing we're doing that we've been talking about, so it is kind of great to get this information. But I understand it is time, too, so. Yeah, I can go with Scott on that one, too.
Carol, any comments or questions? Caroline?
I'm fine with a report.
Any questions from the public? Anybody online?
No questions.
Is this an action, right?
Yes, we have a resolution.
A resolution to approve?
Well, this time, I'll move that we approve resolution 25-80, approving amendment number one to the pavement management plan.
Second, there's been a motion and a second, any other discussion of council? Any from the public?
Nothing online.
Nothing online? Michelle?
Bee Hill.
Hi.
Sharato.
Hi.
Chamentay.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
And Bro Leo.
Hi.
You know, I want to thank you and Chris for, I mean, this has been something, it's just like a redundant water source. Now we, and our CPI projects, now we have a source, a project and a vision. And the vision is always good. If you folks need to leave, you can leave, we can take. That's fine.
We want to get.
Wait, you don't get full credit.
You guys got to see fire, water. Great meeting to come here.
It was.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Bye, guys.
I already have one more, thank you.
I'm calling your teacher and saying you quit in the middle.
Call this drag right now.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, resolution 25-79, authorizing the city administrator to execute a construction contract for the Valacido Road sewer replacement project with R Sutton Enterprises. You're wrong. Dave Richards will make the presentation.
Why do people leave when we start talking?
I apologize, Dave, because this is, well, it's.
Doesn't have the, it just doesn't have the pizzazz.
Mr. Mayor of City Council, we refer tonight to request two actions. One is to authorize Mr. Williams to execute a contract with R E Sutton for the construction of our Valacido Road sewer replacement project. And the second, to authorize the administrator to have the ability to authorize construction change orders up to 5% of the total contract in that. A couple of items, a little bit of background. Always like to know what you're paying for, why are we doing this? The Valacido Road sewer itself is a key element in the overall East Trump Sewer Transmission System, conveying system. This is our objective here for this project is really to increase the capacity of that sewer. We're enlarging the sewer as we go forward. It's downstream of two projects that we recently completed. One of them was the Booster Way Sewer Replacement Project last summer. And then the second is the Purdy Road Sewer Improvements, which we essentially finished today. And it is also upstream, it's upstream of our next sewer project, which is the lining, it's our critical infrastructure protection project that is, that Michelle is, one of these days, she's going to come in and say, we have a million dollars from FEMA to treat that project and that. So this is all in a line. We're working on either side of the Valacido's road project. The last part of the project is there's actually water system improvements that we construct at the lower end of the project that, again, will tie into that FEMA-funded infrastructure protection project in that. We did receive the three bids for that project. The results are there in our staff report in that. And our local contractor, Sutton Enterprises, was the low bid by about 10% less than the second. We took a look at those bid results very specifically and came away that there was nothing unusual in any of the numbers. We feel that the difference, or the Y sub perhaps was a little bit lower than Mazango for a number of reasons. They are our local contractor, they've done a lot of work for the city in the past. They built the Booster Way Sewer Replacement Project, so they know very much what it takes to do that project. That project was a kind of a microcosm of what they're going to do now with Valacido. There was extensive bypass pumping. There was a very detailed construction sequence. They had to work from, normally on a sewer project, you work from the low end to the upper end. We had to reverse that on Booster because of some other factors. We had the same situation on Valacidos. They learned how to take a sewer out and put something back, which is another key element. But I think, very importantly, they established a really super working relationship with Chris's staff and our inspection staff. And so I think that they did a good job on Booster Way. They went the extra mile to make sure that everything was complete and that it's like the Baker's dozen, where they could do a little bit of extra just to make it even a bit nicer, they did. So based on all of that and the bid results, we feel very confident that they are the most responsive and lowest bidder on this project in that. Their bid came in a little bit lower than our engineer's estimate. Our engineer's estimate was almost right in the middle of the three bids. So with that, but answer any questions? But we'd recommend that we move forward with R E Sutton.
Thank you, Dave. I'll start off with a question. So do they, do they put the new sewer line in, you know, parallel to the existing? So, and then they cut and attach? How do they do that?
Well, we have several, we do it several different ways on Valacido. Where we, where we have no, in some instances, we are actually bypassing the sewer. We go around the sewer with temporary lines while we physically take the sewer out. They dig down, they take the sewer out, they redo the, or they rebuild the bottom of the trench, and they put the new sewer in. And we go from manhole to manhole. So it's fairly, I mean, they're basically breaking into that manhole, pulling the pipe out, and then we put the new pipe in and we, you know, we repair the manhole at that juncture. There are other instances where we are basically going to abandon that sewer in certain segments, and we're going to run a parallel sewer across on a different side of the street. So we've got three or four different ways that we are essentially upsizing that sewer. When we take it out, we go, as I say, Mr. Mayor, we go from manhole to manhole.
And then another question, are we addressing any INI issues along Valacido? With the new manholes and putting that.
We will, I mean, we will have a better sewer than we currently have now. And we will also be connecting, reconnecting all of the laterals. And the lateral, those connections to the lateral are also a source of INI. And so we're going to essentially be replacing those connections with the connection into the new sewer. So I'm anticipating that. We will have a much tighter sewer than we currently have. We have, you know, we will CCTV that sewer as part of the approval process of that. So it's a, you've got a brand-new sewer with, that's been CCTV, that has been tested. And so we should be in a much better situation in terms of INI with the new sewer.
Thank you. Scott, any questions?
No, I was just happy to see that you did come in under the estimate, that's always nice. And it's always nice to move forward on another CIP. So I'm excited about that. I was just curious, when I read it says include removal of abandoned pipelines, so if they're on the other side of the street, do we dig up over, or does the, Mary, Captain law, or?
Yeah, we said it's a captain law.
Okay.
Is this addressing the issue of Bird's Way, I mean, of the creek, the sewer creek issue? Is that kind of helping with that issue now? I don't know.
Well, we've improved, we've improved with the Booster Way project.
Right.
We replaced two of the crossings, two of the crossings. The FEMA project that will go forward, Aaron's working on, the FEMA project that will line, will put a liner through the sewer through that area.
Okay.
And essentially, we're creating, we're creating a pipe within the pipe. And the pipe, that's the way that we're going to protect the sewer line going forward. The sewer line doesn't cross the creek again. It only crosses the creek.
Oh, that was the Valacido?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. I mean, that was the Booster Way thing.
Yeah. But it sits right next to the creek.
Yeah, right, that's what I was concerned about, okay.
Carol, any questions?
Not really on that part. So this has no effect on the roadway, right? Because we're getting ready to start, you're going to be starting it soon, right?
Well, when you say no effect on the roadway and that, we will be cutting, you know, we are trenching in that. There is essentially a T-section that gets put back. We put back at the current pavement section, a minimum of the current pavement section in that. And then we do some slurry sealing over that, over that footprint of the trench in that. So we replace the striping as we go along. But yeah, you're going to see, I mean, it's.
We're going to have traffic.
Traffic control. You're going to have more.
Yes, yes. Yeah, there's extensive traffic control on this.
I had brought that up at the last meeting. So we're going to have traffic control here and traffic control.
I know, and this has become, because I know I did this morning. I go around, if I pass it, come back down.
Yeah, it is what it is. It's not, it's not going to be long.
But this one has a, because I did call email, this has a start and end date, though, right? This is not going to take so long.
Yeah. So we have, in the contract, we have 180 calendar days. That's how long the contractor has to do. We, you know, that means from the minute that we give him the notice to proceed to the end of that. Typically, more in that construction period is about six months, but construction period is probably more on the order of three or four months. Now, you know, we're not going to, we're going to work in sequence or in segments as we work our way down. Traffic control will be in place during the day. At night, everything will be plated, so that the traffic, you'll be able to go through. They're essentially required to keep one lane open. So we'll have flaggers, or the contractor will have flaggers and traffic control where it will be, you know, once at some point, the direction is one way, and then at some point, the direction goes the other way. So, but, you know, that will all be, that is part of the, part of the project. There's also detours that will be put in place, so that if you want to avoid that area. And there will be some, there'll be some night.
Is the detour like down Highway 49?
Yeah. Well, that's, is that a fair question?
And there's no way to do that at night, right?
So it's one of the things that we have to take, you know, contractor Sutton has done this kind of work before. We take a hard look at the traffic control plan, and that's one of the things that we'll really be monitoring. And we'll have our inspector essentially full-time during that process. And that's one of the things that he's responsible for, is making sure that that traffic, that there isn't a glitch in the traffic control in that. there isn't a glitch in the, in the traffic control in that. Yeah, we're, you know, we're coming down Vallesito. Yeah.
So good communication to our community on that.
Yes, yes. That's one of the things when we, I mean, we'll make a point, really a point of getting information out to the community as to what's the contractor's schedule, you know, posting on the webpage and things of that. It's because that, you know, we are, we understand that there are infected people that come that way.
Alvin, any questions?
No, I'm just with the same thing. It's kind of like a re, we need to do a bunch of stuff, and it's kind of like a remodel when you're looking through your house is all torn up.
Yeah.
But they, I mean, this is very good on, we need to do this project.
And we're chicken off CIP projects, which.
And I don't know how to make it any better.
We can't make it any, I have a question. Partly because, I mean, and maybe Caroline, I live off a people road. And so we have a lateral that comes, I'm assuming comes down the property and then attaches. You're not messing with the laterals though, correct? You're just doing the main sewer.
Okay, so messing, we're intercepting.
Just intercepting.
We're intercepting a lateral. We, the contractor, the Sutton will have to excavate, and we have, I'll take a step back. We have CCTV of all of that entire line, and that CCTV is very accurate as to where these lack. You can see it right there on the upper lateral. And we know exactly.
Exactly.
Contractor will know where it is. He will excavate out. He'll look at the, he's look at the, at the, determine the depth. And then he will basically cut that, you know, someone will be out of service for part of a day. He'll cut that pipe, he'll cut that pipe, and he'll put some type of coupler on it, and he will extend it to where the new sewer is. And so we're not going back to the property line or anything like that, but those laterals, there are a series of laterals that connect into the line in Vallesito, and we will, because we're building either a new sewer, or you know, replacing the sewer, or paralleling the sewer, we've got to reconnect those, grab those laterals and bring them over to the new sewer.
And then again, that's part of the notification to all the homeowners when they can't flush a toilet.
Yeah, there's a fair.
Or wash clothes or do anything.
No, you'll still be able to do that.
Not if, not if they cap it.
They'll plug it for a short amount. Yeah, they'll plug it for, yeah.
In your neighborhood, it's basically, you have a main, and that main connects into this one. So they're going to have to do some pumping around that.
Yeah, exactly.
You can't just cap them.
Right.
But just for like one house, their lateral, that's what he's talking about, where we're going to have to notify someone, hey, you know, it's going to take us X amount of time to rebook you up to the main.
Yeah, they'll plug you and pump you around the corner.
So Chris, do you guys ever replace laterals?
No.
Into the main trunk?
Laterals are not the city's responsibility, they're the property.
Even though they're not, they leave the property?
It doesn't matter. It's well out in our.
No, no, it's okay. I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, we don't. Even if, even if it's out in the road, the lateral is the homeowner's responsibility.
And so the main trunk is the city and the lateral is?
The mains are ours.
Okay.
So the lateral are currently connected to the existing sewer we're abandoning or replacing existing sewer, so we just have to extend them to the, over to the new sewer in that.
Interesting. Thank you. It's always informative. See, any questions from the public? Anyone online?
No questions.
No questions. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
A second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the public present? Any discussion from?
Online, no.
Online? Rule call.
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Sharato?
Aye.
Chavente?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Polio?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Yeah, see, I can see this kicking. Thank you, guys. Moving on to item D, Resolution 25-77, authorizing Creative Expressions to raise money for Utica Park shade structures. Amy.
Mayor, council members, Christina Martinez is online tonight if you have any specific questions about Creative Expressions. But we have brought this to you before, and basically she contacted the city, asked if her nonprofit could do fundraising for Utica Park shade structures. And we are bringing that to you in form of a resolution, which includes the benefit. Should she do any events to fundraise at Utica Park, we would waive any fees related to that. We don't know how much will get raised. We will likely have to supplement anything that gets raised potentially with grants. They cost between $3,000 and $25,000 without being installed. And exactly where it's going to go, we need to nail that down too. Obviously, this would be the playground. That's where the community has really asked to have the shade structures. So I will be happy to answer any questions, and hopefully Christina also will be able to answer any of your questions.
So if I can begin, I truly appreciate you, Christina, and your organization trying to help the city continue beautifying that area. In my mind, I'd love to see a project identified, so we, so people know what they're contributing and make sure that it's, you know, it's going to meet all the wind tolerance and all of that stuff, so that we don't collect all this money and then maybe move in a different direction or not be able to build what we think we wanted. And so that's my first suggestion or question. Second, can we contact the playground, the company that we purchased, and do they, do they make or manufacture shade structures for that?
There are many prefound ones, and they're, they're all very much similar in a variety. There's either the kind you get with four poles and you do a large expanse. There's the flagged type ones where you attach them. I'd actually like to look into something that is, the way our sun comes in, it slants in, and sometimes just trying to get one that deals with the light from overhead may not do it. And we were looking at some stuff today which shows exactly the angles the sun comes in at what time of day, et cetera. I had shied away from having a specific project, because sometimes you have to reverse design based upon how much money you have available and know what you can afford, as opposed, I mean, we can put a Cadillac out there that's going to cost $200,000 and say, "This is the project we're raising money for," and never get anywhere near that. Or we could say, "We're going to aim for $25,000 and use one of the standard types of shade structures. Go to the planning committee to have them determine exactly what they feel fits best and will work best based upon the budget that we have," and go from there. But if you would rather we have all that nailed down before we ever start doing fundraising, that is an alternative we could look into.
Any question, any other questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I'd kind of want to push back a little bit on that. Like, I think, I think the approach Amy just described, running our budget and then designing to the budget is probably the simplest thing to do.
Yeah, I just worry about what the shade structures will look like and whether or not it's going to truly meet the specifications. I know, you know, going back, you know, when I did anything with DSA, Department of State Architects, and you put anything in the air, you know, and had it, had to meet the wind resistance and tolerance and all of that, and I just want to make sure. I'm fine either way. I'm not going to die on the bridge saying, "No, we need to have a plan in place." But I'd like, I'd like us to at least identify the areas of the park that we'd like to put shade structures.
It would be the main playground.
So would it be that tall structure that they want a shade structure over that tall structure?
We can't put one.
We can't put one.
We can't put one there.
We would be looking basically to be shading, if you want specifics, the playground, that swing area and that playground area there, and maybe part of the other area.
Okay, okay.
Right, and you were talking about that angling, because I've noticed that when we're down there, like that sun comes down.
That sun comes down.
If you had that angle, that would do more.
And I haven't found any prefound ones that do that. We may actually have to have somebody come out and suggest doing something that comes like this on that raise there, that comes like this, so that it blocks the sun coming down.
That might be easier for wind resistant though, too, right?
Yeah. Well, and obviously, we're not going to put anything in the park that does not pass the wind resistance and all those tests. The playground itself, we have a playground specialist come in and certify it. I mean, no, we, we're not going to do that. As far as appearance, we have been relying on our, our planning committee that had done the rest of the playground stuff, and that's who we would take it to again, as well as back to you before we would install it. So I don't know if that'll raise any concerns. Now, maybe Christina has something to add. I don't, I don't know.
There she goes, she's turning it on.
No, you're muted still. No, it still looks like you're muted. Oh, we may have to unmute you. It says mute participant. Can you put it in the chat, Christina?
So what are we looking at, the life expectancy of this, the fabric and things like that?
So it's three to 10-year warranty for the fabric, depending upon what it's going to afford. The more you spend, the longer the warranty. The poles and stuff are usually about 20 years. Any movable parts are usually closer to three to five.
And we're hoping that some of the vegetation and trees that we planted will grow.
Well, they will also.
So that will help create more shade as well.
It will eventually, but I think the hope is to faster than slower.
So it's going to be something that if we build it, we're also going to have to remember we have to maintain it.
Yes.
And replace.
Yes.
Okay.
That is true of everything in the park, yes.
That is true of everything in the park.
So I, I don't want to go for one second, I guess.
And we're going to try to.
I vote for you if she has anything to say.
Yeah, so if we're trying to, keep working for a second. So I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around this. I'm all for, I know we had a lot of community outreach for, well, not outreach, we had a lot of community response for shade over that, over, over the play structure. So I'm, I'm fine with this. And from what I gather, Christina Martinez, she is the nonprofit 501(c)(3) through Creative Expressions, who is going to raise money through different fundraisers and mechanisms, just like the community club did down there.
Just like that.
Okay. And then they're asking us also to waive any and all, when they have anything down there, will they come to us and ask for those? Or are we just making a blanket statement that we will waive any and all?
No, Christina would first come to the planning department, ask us, anybody, before they use the park, and ask to be using the park and what the reservation would be for and what activity would occur. And we just, instead of having to have her apply for the grant system that we have, if she needs to use the pavilion, we're not going to charge her $75 for the pavilion because it's on already. If she needs to use the kitchen that day, same, I have an idea.
I'm all, I'm all for this. I think this is something that the community did want, and if Christina and a group wants to take it on, I think it's a great thing. My only concern is, I don't know where we stop on this either. You know, if somebody wants to build a skate park, how do we tell them? I'm just, I'm just, I'm going way out in left field. Or other things, where do we stop this? If people want to add to our park, I think that's great. But at some point, it's got to fit also. So that's my concern on this is all. And I think this, I think this fits, because it was a community thing that a lot of people did want. I think this is great. It just, there may be a time come when we have to tell somebody, "No," because it doesn't work or fit at the same time too. So I just want to look at both sides.
And that's why we brought this to you, so you can say, "Yes, it does." No, it does not.
And I still would love to see, of course, Christina, if she can hear me. I think your Creative Expressions would be wonderful to take over the park. Do the landscape, the maintenance. I think you can make millions of dollars. I think it's a great thing I do, yeah. So either way, I'm just kidding.
Just shake your head yes if you're going to see that more.
Yeah. So either way, there's my two cents on it all.
Any other comments from council? Any comments from the public?
No.
No?
Okay. I'm just real, I'm real neutral on the idea. I honestly, shade, no shade. I think kids need to be tough.
Yeah, I know, we didn't have it.
Their slides aren't, they are. They get a little hot, but, you know, I mean, I don't know. But the community wants, I don't know if it's a really vocal minority that wants it. I don't know if the majority really would give it that much thought. So I'm, I'm, if someone wants to raise money, you know, I have a lot of respect for them raising money for the playground the way they did and what that morphed into. So I'm not about to say, "No, don't raise money." But I hope that there's a caveat for the donors that says, you know, "This may or may not happen. If it doesn't happen, we'll try to put your money to the best use we can."
Right. And we talked about some of that going, like the money's raised, Amy, going towards maintenance though, right? Because that's the biggest thing for me, and my thought is just the maintenance of that we've talked about.
That was for a different fund. Obviously, this would go to a specific purpose. Would only be used for that specific purpose unless the donor said it was okay to use for another purpose.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments? Unfortunately, we can't hear the young lady.
Sir, I somehow got a comment from Christina.
Okay.
I guess, but she said, "I am currently talking with several different companies. I'm getting quotes. The park is unusable during the heat by 9:00 a.m. Yes, I am 501(c)(3.)"
Okay.
Would love to get an update from her at some point.
There we go. There's chat.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I will second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments from the council? Anybody present? Anyone online? Hearing that, rule call.
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Sharato?
Aye.
Chavente?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Polio?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 552, signed ordinance update. Introduce, waive the second reading by substitution of title, hold a public hearing, and consider adoption. Amy.
Mayor, City Council, this is your second reading. I will prolong it. There are two changes. The resolution itself should say October 7th on page 99. And the other change, actually, there's three changes. Change on page 111, we have 90 days, it's 100 days temporarys. And then we're removing the phrase "open" as that is content related in the proposed signed ordinance. Again, this was something that came to us, the public wanted to see, the ability to do more temporary signs. The reason we stuck with 100 is because the Outdoor Advertising Act basically has a 100-day provision in it already. This is also including being able to allow in-house issuance in the historic district for signs. And otherwise, it basically addresses just some of the loopholes we've had throughout the years. And we have you answering any questions.
Any questions from council?
Are we actually requiring the removal of any existing pole signs or billboards or permanent signs?
So basically, it's a sun, it's a sunset. So if they just, what you have now, you do not have to remove. If you decide to change it in the future, just like all of our non-conforming uses, then you would remove it.
Because when people build those signs or billboards, billboards especially, didn't they have reasonable expectation that that would, when they paid their fees, and that that would last permanently?
Those are done under, most of those are done under leases. And once the leases expire, leases expired, I'll defer to council if they know more about those, but that's been my experience that.
So can we have to determine the lease run regardless of what they're advertising before we tell them they got to take it down?
I believe we actually say that in here about the lease and say that the lease has to expire.
And then if they're not leased, if they're owned?
I believe they're all leased, all the billboards. They're usually owned by companies and they are all leased. I am aware of that.
Okay. Yeah, because I didn't want to have, make someone tear down a building, a sign that was theirs, what they anticipated would be a permanent sign when they built it, when they paid fees. I just, I'm not comfortable with that.
Gotcha. That, again, they're legal non-conforming, they get to stay there, they're there for the duration of the lease on billboards. No new billboards and no new pole signs are the emphasis in the code. And then at such time, after the sunset date, not taking down what you already have, but if you want to do a major change to it in the future, then we're talking about having to ultimately take down a pole sign, which wouldn't have a lease on it. There are not that many in town.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public have a comment regarding this? Anyone online?
To some person, no questions.
Okay. So hearing, no public comment. We will return it back to the council for a motion, close the public hearing.
Gotcha.
Okay, there's been a motion and.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Anybody from the public? Anybody online? Hearing none, roll call.
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Chavente?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Brolea?
Aye.
Item F, Resolution 25-76, approving the draft regional transportation plan. Amy Augustine.
Mayor and council members, you already approved our list under a prior resolution that will be included in the regional transportation plan. Cog just asked that we give you a copy of the full draft, which has not yet gone to their board for approval to show that you are in favor of the updated regional transportation plan so they can take that to their full board before they adopt it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alvin, didn't we see the regional transportation?
We saw, we didn't adopt it.
We didn't adopt it.
We just information.
We just said it was information.
Yeah, we just saw it last.
Right, last meeting.
Wednesday, yeah.
Right, okay. And Amy, you and I have talked, you know, I, there are pockets of money that come for specific projects, but it would be nice if we could tag some of those dollars to Finish Foundry Lane and we mentioned that at cog and things, but we're not in control of the funding sources, right?
Not, that's not entirely true.
Okay.
There are some local impact fees and in fact, they are renewing, pursuing them for the new transportation facility in San Andreas.
Okay.
And those can only go to things that have an approved project study report. And guess what the only other project is in the county that hasn't approved projects?
Foundry.
Foundry Lane. So we brought that up to cog and said, hey. And basically, the response was, okay, if you let us go ahead with this plan for this, we will make sure that that comes to you next time. And I'm saying that here.
Right.
So that we all remember that in two years when it comes our turn to use those funds for Foundry Lane.
Thank you.
I mean, that's generally how it goes.
Yes.
I have a couple, couple comments, questions. On the City of Angels, on the Foundry Lane project, there it says construct a two-land roadway. I think that might follow the lane.
Okay.
And then it talks about including the roundabout at intersection. So I'm assuming they're talking about the roundabout on, on four and Foundry.
And then Francis probably.
And then what, it doesn't mention Francis or the other end of the road.
Yeah, okay, because that's not the other end of Foundry. For Foundry, it would just be, so the other end of the road would not be. It comes out on 49 up closer to Capello.
Okay.
And that is not planned to be rounded out at this point forever.
Oh, so this doesn't come out where that roundabout is supposed to be?
No, this comes out quite near their north.
Past CDK.
CDK.
Past CDK before Capello, yes.
Okay. And then the, there are a couple Greenhorn Creek connectors.
Yes.
Are they planned to, to accommodate safe, safely small EVs?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
Like a golf cart, yes.
Yes, I didn't want to say that.
Just don't say that.
We're a funding agency. There you go.
And then I notice on Foundry Lane Phase 3, if I understand, so there, I think it should read SR4 and not SR49.
That further phase comes out on 49.
49 going towards San Andreas.
So it starts on four and it cuts over to 49.
It says extend Angels Oaks, Greenhorn Creek Road across 49. So is Angels Oaks, Greenhorn going to go all the way around to 49?
It should say Foundry Lane. It should say Foundry Lane.
Let's double check that. It's going to go all the way behind there and come back out.
Yeah, that's the way it is. I didn't know that. So Foundry Lane is going to, okay.
Let me double check that.
Yes. And then I think that was all I had.
I went too far.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay.
On the report, I noticed they still had Ann Forrest down as head of DAC.
In the RTP?
Yep.
I'll be honest, I mainly paid attention to our.
Sure. I know, but I did, her name just caught my eye when I was going through the contact list.
Kara? Alvin?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Any other comment from the public?
No.
Anyone online?
No.
Is there a motion to approve our Resolution 25-76?
Some move.
There's been a motion and a second by Kara. Any other discussion from the council? Any discussion from the public? Anyone online? Hearing none, roll call.
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Chavente?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Brolea?
Aye.
Moving on to item G, ordinance 549, final commission vacancies. Introduce, waive the first reading by substitution of title, hold a public hearing. It's set October 21st, 2025 for a second reading of an ordinance to address appointments to and vacancies on the planning commission. Amy Augustine.
Mayor and council members, you already passed a resolution for this, but the resolution says that you will adopt it as an ordinance and that the resolution is only temporary. This makes it permanent and puts it in the code. And it basically says that if there's a vacancy on the planning commission, often their term is expired until you get someone back in that seat, they can continue serving in that seat so that we have a core present on the commission. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Any questions from the public regarding this ordinance, closed ordinance? Anyone online? Okay, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. And this is the first reading and so.
Oh, that's right. It's set to October 21st.
No action.
Okay. So we're good?
Okay.
Moving on to item H, Resolution 25-82, adopting revisions to the city council handbook. Will?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Before you, as a proposed resolution, adopting revisions to the city official handbook, commonly known as the city council handbook, the changes proposed are specifically to chapter seven of the handbook. Council in the past has indicated support for clearer language articulating that staff in the conduct of city business should engage through the city administrator and not directly with individual council members. The proposed revisions are specifically contained in section C1, which defines the relationship between council and the city administrator, and in C4, which defines staff roles. And the proposed language in C4 encourages council members to direct their requests for information to the city administrator, but also recognizes they may also contact department heads when appropriate. The proposed revisions additionally encompass a change directed by council to include language establishing a one-hour per month limit on council member attorney time with an exception for the mayor. And there is a side-by-side and the red line version in the packet for your consideration. And I will take any questions.
I had one on there. I was, when you, is it okay to have a point person, like instead, you know, if there's an area where they can, the employees can come to council if it has something to do with the city administrator? And I was wondering if there's a way, like it could go just to like the vice mayor or something? It just starts there, sort of just individual council members, if that makes sense?
I would say.
So there's like a point person for them to go to?
You could have a rule like that. I think when you have a complaint system in place for staff to be able to report, say, misconduct of the city administrator, you wouldn't want to have a rule where they could go to anybody. And you wouldn't want them to feel restricted on who they could talk to. Conceivably, they might feel more comfortable talking to one of you rather than another. And we would want to.
Or have them go to the attorney.
I'd say direct them to the city attorney.
Yeah.
And so the question I have is Scott and Kara, have you guys done your orientation with the attorneys yet? Sat down and went through the handbook and all of that? Scott, have you done it since you were reelected or?
Not since reelected, no.
Okay. That would, that would be something that would be good.
Absolutely.
To think about and schedule.
Absolutely.
I, I appreciate the changes. I mean, I, the, the communication was something that we, we talked about as council and I appreciate the fact that, and I have talked with Steve, that if there is an agenda item, it's okay for the council to talk with, just like I did this week, to talk with Chris about that we've done at Water Source because, you know, our city manager already knows it's an agendaized item and we're just getting more information. But it does clarify what our role is in terms of giving direction. And I appreciate that.
And I think it's good for staff to kind of, gives them the clear direction to of where, what's expected and, and so it's, it's better for them on their end too.
I agree.
That's good.
Yeah, as long as that gets told to staff.
Yeah.
Staff needs to be aware of all this as much as we do. So they'll all be on the same page, right?
I guess.
You have to be empowered to stand up to us so you can talk to my boss.
No, it was pretty clear because I got, as I read further, because I just met with Chris, I'm like, okay, it's totally different because.
Right. It is different. Alvin, any comments or?
That was great.
We're good.
Any comments from the public? Anyone online? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council? The public? Anyone from the public? Roll call.
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Chavente?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Brolea?
Aye.
Moving on to the last agenda item, I, Resolution 25-72, approving a side letter agreement to the memorandum of understanding with the Angels Camp Police Association regarding longevity pay. Steve?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. Before you tonight is a request to consider a resolution that would authorize a side letter between the city of Angels and the Angels Camp Police Officers Association regarding longevity pay. A specific section within the police officers MOU right now says that for every five years of continuous full-time employment, the police officer shall receive an additional 2.5% pay increase. This proposal would remove that word continuous, meaning that this would recognize if a police off, we have a police officer in the city and that police officer leaves to go do something else, whether it's in the police field or in the private practice, when they come back to us as a police officer, we're recognizing their previous years of service with us in the longevity pay formula. So this just clears that up. It, it gives us an opportunity to encourage those that were with us at one time and left in good standing to come back to us. And it's a way that our police department can hopefully increase their ability to attract those types of qualified applicants to the position. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from council? Kara? Caroline? Scott? Any questions from the public? Anyone online?
No questions online.
Thank you, Steve, for clarifying that and thanks. I don't know if Scott is still there, but bringing that to our attention. I appreciate that. And it does recognize folks that may have left, served our city, left and came back.
Sorry, I think I do have one more.
It's okay.
One more piece of information, just to clarify that this modification would be effective retroactively to September 15th of this year.
Okay.
Is there no other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council? Anybody from the public? Anyone online? Hearing none. Michelle?
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Chavente?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Brolea?
Aye.
Moving on to item 11, informational items. We don't have any informational items. Moving on to item 12, administration report.
Thank you, mayor. You have in your packet the monthly update to the council highlighting all the good work that our staff is doing around the city. So if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer it. Other than that, I have just a couple of other items. Any questions about the monthly report first?
It's not a question, it's a comment. Amy, I think the planning department's going to have, the planning commission's going to have a couple of interesting meetings coming up. One with the food trucks and the other one with the old Casa Bells. It's going to be interesting to see how, what recommendation they have. So anyone else have a comment regarding the reports? Hearing none, you have another.
Just a couple of other items. I would like to make the council aware that I've been working in my couple of weeks that I've been back, trying to get up to speed on all of the things in the areas that I can help. And one of the big things is the relationship with Caltrans and me personally establishing those connections of, of staff members of Caltrans that I can go to when there are questions. I have the project manager for the construction that's going on right now on Highway 49 has committed to come to your next city council meeting, October 21st, to provide an update to the council and to the public about the progress of that project, what the next steps are, the causes of the delays, and just make themselves available for any questions that the council may have or that the public may have. So I was, I was happy and encouraged that they were willing to come and make that presentation on a relatively short notice from an unknown, you know, person that just called up and made the request, but that was good. I have also been talking with them about press releases. In my world, it is almost unheard of for an agency to issue a press release regarding another agency's work. That's, that's just like, that's a no-no. In this case, I can see how that is a little bit different because it is another agency that's doing work within our jurisdiction that's affecting our entire community. So I have tentative approval. I told them today, asked them today. Can I create a press release based on what I know about the project and the delays and the timelines and, and everything that's going on? Send it to your public information officer for them to review and give their stamp of approval. And if they're okay with what I'm saying and everything is accurate, then we as a city can issue a press release, just informing the community about what's going on. They have so many projects, I'm told, going on within Caltrans. We recently attended a quarterly meeting where they, within District 10, all of the different projects that are going on. And I can understand why their public information officer would not want to issue regular releases on each individual project, given the number of projects that they're handling. So it was another encouraging thing that they were willing to review a press release created by the city regarding work that they're doing, just so we can give some information out to the public rather than no information. So that was a good thing. At the last council meeting, council member Beal asked about the possibility of maybe adding another police officer to the authorized staffing. So I asked Michelle to look up the cost of adding a police officer, just so you can be aware of what that cost is. The cost is $116,000 to $141,000, low end of the pay scale to high end of the pay scale. So just for your information, since you asked a question, I wanted to make sure the council was aware. If you want to add another police officer to the authorized staffing levels, that's the cost that it would be as of right now. There was also discussion about special event grant and the lengthy and, I would say, cumbersome form that it's in right now. If somebody wants to request a grant from the city, you authorize, I believe it's $25,000. So I have revised that grant application. I'm circulating it through a couple of staff members to make sure that I'm not missing something. So I just wanted to let you know that that request to revise that cumbersome grant process is being worked on. And then I think the last thing that I have is, you heard from Dave Richard today and approved the work to start on Balacito. And I just wanted to take just a minute to highlight the fact that we are moving forward on these CIP projects. From October of last year, we've completed Booster, we went immediately into Mark Twain, we've now completed Mark Twain, we went immediately into Purdy Way. I'm told Purdy Way will be completed probably by the end of this week, definitely by the end of the next week. And then you just approved the beginning of Balacito. Dave Richard has agreed that Balacito should start in November, and it should be completed by May. So a lot of good work being done with your capital improvement projects. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to council reports. Alvin?
Council reports. I want to piggyback on what Steve said and the Caltrans update and all that, that you just, so that's wonderful. And I do have from COG, this is the Caltrans report that's just going on in Calabasas County. So these are all the different projects, so, and I was gonna say, it's just like Steve said, there's a whole plethora of stuff going on. So if anyone wants to see the list of Caltrans working on that, it's right there.
I provided, Michelle's, Michelle's made copies, or Casey did, so everyone has a copy of what's going on.
Went to the Calabasas Council of Government the other night with Mike. What do we have on here? We had some, just appropriations of funds that were already in the budget, we just had to allocate them.
Talk about Caltrans and Phase 2 of the wagon trail?
Caltrans and Phase 2 of the wagon trail is the last big thing. That has now been passed completely onto Caltrans and out of the county's hands. And we gave them the funding that was left in there as seed money to start doing projects, or to start the project off. That was the main takeaway on that. What else did we miss from that one?
And there was, did, how much money did we receive for the walking trail, for the Angels Creek Path? And there was money available and we needed to stay on top of that, is that correct?
Yeah.
That was 85 that they already gave us.
I thought it was...
Rather than we, we loaned to the, to the Valley Springs Safe School, that they will pay back. So that's, I'll bring that up in one sec.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then in Calabasas Connect, which is your transportation, ridership is way up. They were standing room only in the bus to Columbia, so...
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah, they were having people actually stand and hold on to the handrail, so that's awesome. The ridership also was up because the, they, the high school over there is also doing it. But the fare box is still up, so, and that has to happen, so they're doing really wonderful things too. And then, for me, on the Council of Governments, that money that's allocated to this Angels Creek Trail, can we get an update on that, on where we're at?
She's looking at Steve.
At some point soon. Reason being is I don't want to miss out or have funding slip away or us not produce or something, but that's been in the works for a long time. And I think we really need to get moving on that CIP project too. And that was a big conversation that was had there too, was on, we're getting this funding, we need to spend this funding, we need to keep projects in the queue too, so when funding does come available, we can get it. So, but then when we get it, we have to spend it, and that's just a cycle that we don't want to lose. So I just know that that is one that has been on the books for a very long time, and I would love an update on that one as soon as possible. So, what else did I miss from COG?
Oh, you're good.
What else? And then, did you include the regional transportation plan?
No, go ahead.
Okay. And then if anybody would like to see this, and I'm sure Melissa Raggio can also get this, they did the regional transportation plan that we just approved tonight, and we had an update on that. Yeah, and it's in the package, so, that's what else we have. That's all I have.
Have we reported out from Utica's last meeting?
Yes, we did at last. I don't know.
Last time though, right?
Keep going.
Okay, Kara?
I don't really have much, I went to the LAFCO.
Sorry.
Thanks. I did go to the LAFCO meeting, but it was, to be honest, first one, so it's kind of... Uh, yeah. So, but I'm excited, I think, because I'll miss the next city council meeting, I will be heading to San Diego for the LAFCO conference.
Congratulations.
So hopefully, my brain will be soaking in and exploding after. I'm excited to win. So let Scott report on LAFCO.
Caroline?
Um, so, I did not report out on Utica, because we have not had a meeting since the last Utica meeting, so...
Oh, okay, good.
But it's pretty short. The Sierra Hope has vacated next door to our offices there, so that's empty, so they're gonna be looking for a new renter to come in. And the recruitment for the general manager, we reopened it, and it had a closing date, but we reopened it to, until filled. And so we're looking to get some more applicants for that job. Outside of that, the NCPA manager, Randy, has announced he's retiring. And the FERC stuff is continuing, we got a full accounting on that from StanTech. And now it's in, you know, we're just waiting from FERC to see what feedback they have, and we're continuing to finalize some of the straggling...
Reports?
Reports, yeah.
Scott?
With LAFCO, we're still going through the process of hiring a new executive director, so that's, that's gonna take probably till January. And we do the MSRs on the, on Angels Camp, and I thought it was very complimentary. It seems like we're getting ahead of most things, or we're on top of what cities need to do. So that was, that was nice, they wanted the city's cooperation. And we also did with all the veteran, veteran...
Districts.
Districts, thank you. All veteran districts, and those, those vary widely in their abilities and, and I suppose, it's kind of interesting to see. We have some annexations coming through, I understand, so I'll be curious, I've never witnessed one of them before, so I'll be curious to see how that works. And I'll let Kara go down there, learn all about it, explain to me. And that's, that's it for me.
Yeah, I, I did attend COG, and Alvin has already reported on it. And I think, you know, being an alternate is always good, but you're like you're thrown into the wolves, because you're sitting down in this meeting and it's like...
Yeah, I know what that feels like.
But it, I, it was good, and it was a good team. During the meeting, Caltrans made a presentation, and I publicly thanked Troy for his willingness to communicate and cooperate. I talked with Troy this morning, and I just alluded, or I reiterated with him that I mentioned at COG that if we could dress up the entrances to businesses, that would be good before the winter starts. I think now there is some concern about how much they're gonna be able to get done once winter starts. I think he's got a game plan that he'll probably share with the council on the 21st. A lot of it has to do with compaction, he said. He said, you know, we start digging in the rain, we can't get compaction, and you're not gonna like the job. And so, I mean, I think, again, through no fault of, of his, this project is stalled, because when they potholed, they had to redesign the project. So the DIs are coming, the drain inlets are coming, and hopefully there'll be some progress. And I think his hope and intent, and I'm not putting words in his mouth, is to see how much he can get done before it really starts raining. But he does understand it would be good to dress up the entrances to the businesses, so. And that's, and that's all I have. Go ahead, Steve.
One thing, just to clarify, Troy may or may not be here at the next meeting. This is Troy's manager that will be here at the 21st. It's the project manager.
Well, he, I thought Troy was the project manager.
Now Troy, Troy is the, he's like a, I forgot what he, what it's called, but it's, it's his boss that is going to the 21st. And he may ring Troy or may not, I'm not sure.
So, moving on, anything else from the council? Hearing none, 14, it's correspondence, any correspondence? Okay. Calendar, Michelle?
So I have October up there, so we have...
We'll look at the 11th on Saturday.
Nothing's there?
It's been there for a while.
There's a, there's the 11th, and for some reason, forget it, who cares?
We have planning this week here at 5:00 PM. And then, the following week, we have COG-TAC, CPPA, and IRWMA. And then our next city council meeting will be on the 21st, and then UWPA on the 28th.
That might get...
Okay.
I feel like, it still feels like there was supposed to be a LAFCO meeting in October.
I think on October 20th, it might be called a special meeting. I think, it depends on the administration, on the executive director, so...
And I did update the appointments from the last meeting on here, so we've added Scott to the CSEDD, CSED?
I was thinking, yes.
Yeah. And then also to LAFCO. So those have been updated. And then we can look ahead at November. Oh, and one thing to point on the calendar, which we realized in the office today, that Monday, the 13th, is a holiday.
Is it a legal holiday?
It's a legal holiday, so City Hall will be closed on the 13th, so just have a...
Was that for me helping you yesterday?
Yes, yes.
And then the 20, or November calendar, we have our city council meeting on the 4th and then the 18th. I believe Thanksgiving's at the end here, and we also have Veterans Day, so we have three holidays in November. Coming up here, we have LAFCO on the 17th, and COG on the 5th, so. Same thing, we have updates down here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor, we have one calendar, Michelle, if you could go back to October? It's not on this calendar, but just a reminder, in addition to the, the event this Saturday, the Wild West Fest, I believe there is a ribbon cutting...
Oh, there is.
On Wednesday, from 5:00 to 7:00, the new Habitat building.
Habitat.
Keep that on everyone's radar.
Yeah.
This is starting the 22nd.
Michelle, I'm on vacation from the 11th through the 16th, but they added time, so unfortunately I'm missing closes.
Is that, so this one is the old, so the 11th?
The 11th through the 16th, I'll be returning, I'll be back on the 22nd.
And Calendar's Transit will be providing transit back and forth too.
Any future agenda items?
I have one.
Okay, we'll start with Caroline.
Um, I'd love to see if we could get a Visitor Bureau CVB update. I don't know what time of year he normally does that, but I can't recall the last time we've had one, so... I'd love to hear like how TOT is looking and all that good stuff.
I was going to see if in future time we can look into exploring like park maintenance and general fund to see how we could afford a new public, another public works.
And then I just have the update on the...
Angels Creek Trail.
Yeah, and then, the plaques for the trees? Are those in order?
We've had them for quite some time.
Okay.
They just need to be installed, and Steve, you have an update on that?
That's fine, okay.
I do, I just happened to talk to Chris about that today.
Okay.
And they are gonna, it's quite a project. So for the, the trees, the plan is to pour a little bit of concrete and insert those plaques into the concrete. And for the benches, the plan is to actually weld those plaques onto those benches, and they're gonna start that work tomorrow. Two of the fellow work staff members are gonna start on that. I think we have 13 to 15 plaques sitting at Amy's desk, so our fellow work staff will take those and get started tomorrow.
I had one, I had one, one mother asking me and another member of public, so...
And one mother can also be told that there was an O at the end of one of the plaques that was missing, and they are reprinting that.
Oh, okay.
I looked at that thing for three weeks thinking...
Hey, you know, it's a law. Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
I had an update for you, I forgot, during council reports, the Angels Camp Veterans Memorial District approved purchasing two trees to replace the two trees...
Thank you.
At that memorial.
Okay.
And Steve, this is not a future agenda item, but I'm just, will the, should I pick the proclamation from you? Will it be on that nice, on Michelle, or?
Yes.
Proclamation for Saturday? Okay, okay. And then we've talked briefly about the strategic plan and having staff look at the plan and maybe update council, maybe a special study session or, or something to see where we are with that? Once you get kind of grounded a little bit?
Yes.
We could look at that? Would the public have any future agenda items? Anyone online left, Michelle?
We have one person online, does that look like any questions?
Is that it for future agenda items? Okay, there, hearing none, no future agenda items, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Michelle, roll call?
Yes, Beal?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Shmenti?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Rolio?
Thank you all.